Are we ready to start? Kevin, are you ready to get started?
Yes, let's go ahead and get started. Sorry, I can't be there. I'm all the way up in Centerton.
Okay, well, can you can't see what we've got on the screen then?
I'm driving right at the moment, but I'll be stopped here in about five minutes. But go ahead.
All right. So tonight's meeting is going to serve as a kickoff of sorts to get the discussion of updating our comprehensive land use plan. I believe we discussed a tentative completion date in October, is that right? Okay, it's more around October. But we want to go ahead and begin that process and talk a little bit about our agenda within that and some of the speakers that we're planning to have. First, go ahead and guess congratulate ourselves on managing to get this through and effectively tripling the potential of the downtown form-based codes. Yeah, so you guys want to take over here?
The last time we updated the comprehensive land use plan was in 2012. The last time we made major changes to it since 2012. There's been a few changes in what's going on since then. And so what we really need to do is be able to give this update to the planning commission. As you see, as you see on here, we we've always tried to get it in by November. So we have plenty of time so it gets updated now. The problem that we have now is last year when we were supposed to talk about the master street plan and with all the COVID stuff, we didn't get that worked into any updates of last year. So if time permits, we may try to run the two together. I don't know. Really, we're talking about land use plan itself. I think everybody that's on the call or in here so far kind of understands what the land use plan is or is there any kind of details you want us to go into about what it is and how it works. Remember that it's not a zoning map. It doesn't set actual boundaries for different kinds of land uses on the map itself. It's a guide. It expresses current goals and policies. And the goals and policy statements, it's just isn't as important or in my opinion, more important than what the map is shows itself shows because when we get tested in court on how decisions are made, if we can show that it addresses the goals and policies, that puts us in a much better position. And if you will know every time we have a zoning request, I'll go over the goals and policy statements that we are that we are addressing with our resume. So keep that in mind. That's that's where all this goes together. How many of you still have a copy of the last one or do we need to get you a copy of the land use plan itself? Now, if you go online, this is what you get online.
We have, if you go back to one of the earlier slides, oh, well, it's up there too. I forgot I had thrown that on there.
That's the map itself is online, but are the written policies and stuff, are they online?
Yes, it is.
You go to the city's website and get all of those and be able to look at that.
All of that is on our main page. So if you just go to the Springdale Planning Department homepage, you'll find all of that and including the maps and everything.
So the basic land use classifications you see on our land use map and in our written stuff is we have goals about residential development. We have goals about commercial development. We have goals about industrial development and in public lands and the downtown district, which those are going to have to change because our downtown district is totally different from what it was when the land use plan was adopted in 2012. So one of the things we've got to translate on to that is downtown master plan goals and policies to go in this. Now, we are looking at the possibility of trying to update the downtown master plan in five years since that was adopted. A lot of things have happened since 2015 that we need to be reflected in our downtown master plan in our land use plan as a whole. And I'll just keep rambling until somebody stops me, okay?
So Kevin, what we have on the screen right now is the land use plan as it was last updated. This is 2012, yes? And we are flipping through some of the goals pages as well, and that includes commercial uses and residential uses and so on and what the city's aim is by having those. So one of the things that Patsy had mentioned in the last couple of days is we really started to close in on what we wanted to talk about tonight is how we want to sharpen those goals moving forward. That way, we're not just having a laundry list of things. As it sort of appears now, we've narrowed it down to maybe four or five that are more manageable bites for us moving forward. And as this commission evolves over time and makes it a little bit easier to interpret.
My suggestion would that each of you go to the website, look at this, look at the policies involved as they're written down and see what are still applicable. Because, you know, like the first one is encourage land use that are compatible to results and balanced and efficient overall development. There's no question we want to continue that goal. How we get to that, some of the objectives that are under there, we need to go into those kind of discussions about how how that works. When you go over to residential development, it's one, two, three, four, five, six goals. We may need to kind of consolidate those a little bit better into residential land use goals, the commercial land use goals, one, two, three, four, five of those. It must have been pretty consistent because they all have about the same number. Commercial land uses, industrial land uses, same kind of thing. The public land one has a whole lot more goals and I think we probably need to settle back down some. And then the downtown district is one, as I said, we have to adjust. You need to look through these and see what you think are the important things with what we have going on now, those goals and policy statements. And then the next step is to translate those goals and policies into what it looks like on the map. Coming out the process works. And I can sit here and read them all to you, but you don't have to read your stuff. It's not something I need to sit here and read to you. But I would encourage you, we discussed having the next session on March 30th, right?
That's correct.
And these are the speakers that we've kind of talked about lining up. We have Mervin with the Center for Business and Economic Research to come and speak to us on the 20th to kind of talk about and what we're trying to do is narrow it down to these are the topics we want you to discuss when you come here. And can you kind of summarize what we asked Mervin to?
Absolutely. So really, we wanted to touch base and figure out what sort of growth are we looking at? How can we be as educated as possible as we revise the comprehensive land use plan? Some of what was asked of him is, hey, what sort of commercial structures are sitting empty? Do you have that sort of data? So that way we can turn around and say, hey, these are some available properties for development within the city. So we're not just focusing on growing out or trying to be as, I don't know what you want to call it, reasonable about our growth and development as possible. Because jumping down into our discussion with Heath Ward, some of this is going to be what is the stress that is being put on infrastructure when we're growing out to the West as much as people are saying to want to? What is the stress on the infrastructure growing down to the Southeast? So primarily, what we may speak to with Keith is going to be water going out west. What is that going to cost taxpayers? What does that look like based upon kind of the work that they had to do with Bethel Heights, what we're talking to about putting sewer down to the East? So using some of those recent examples are hopefully going to come in handy. But additionally, with Mervin, we've got some residential stuff, like what is sitting empty, what multifamily might be sitting empty as well? We hear a lot that houses are turning over by the minute. You don't even get to look at them. So how true is this in Springdale? Philip Talde, we're hoping to be able to get some out of him with regard to the 612 bypass related stuff and whatever airport access we're going to be able to get related to 612 or 112 and then any other things that he thinks might be pertinent. And then finally, Dr. Cleveland, the questions specifically that were asked of him to focus on are going to be status of Dr. Rollins School out there in Tonnentown and how is that going to impact growth to the West? What sort of plans are in line to have new schools built in two, five, and even 10 years out? What are these things looking like? And then just anything that he might have in mind that's going to be pertinent because school is a very important infrastructure with regard to everything. So we may as well take that into account as we start to really sculpt the provisions.
And Mervin's really the only guy we have tied down because we gave him first option because he's as an outside source. And as we move forward, this will get the rest of them tied in. Our question is, are there other areas or other expertise or other people we could bring in that you guys need feel like we need to talk about as we look at or visit the land use plan?
Something I think I'd like to hear from Mervin because he's a he's a he's a really good speaker too. And so I'm glad he's coming. But I would like to hear maybe more about kind of economic factors that have been on fast track the last year, changes on thinking of, you know, obviously work from home, people working from home and how that would impact, you know, office space, the need for office space and also with what we with the whole Amazon warehouse thing that we had a few months ago, just around where the need for warehouse space and industrial that's maybe not hardcore industrial, but maybe light industrial type stuff. I think that's something he could maybe provide some insight on. I'd be interested to hear about.
They collect a lot of data so they can bring us what they're seeing in the data trends. Like I said, he is a good speaker.
And I think based on the questions that were sent over to him, there's some there's some overlap. So we may have that queued in and already otherwise. Yeah, he's he's prepped to speak for about 15 or 20 minutes and have about an equivalent amount of time to Q and A with everybody. That way we can cover as much ground as possible.
And we tell the other presenters the same thing, 15, 20 minutes, and then we want chances to ask questions and have dialogue back and forth because I think that's the that's the best way we get that kind of information. We didn't include anybody from Parks and Rec. I mean, we've pretty well addressed the Parks and Rec issues in Springdale a while. We can invite police and fire if you think that's important. I don't I don't know what other kinds of things that went to Mervin for economic development rather than somebody from the chamber to get a bigger picture of Springdale fits in the region. So are there and you don't have to give us all the answers tonight. We're just trying to get some ideas and how we start bringing in some of these discussions to start.
And feel free to reach out via email to us. And if you have questions that we can send along to these people to kind of have them prep beforehand to prepare for those types of questions. Because more than likely, if if one of you guys is thinking of now, somebody else is going to be thinking about it by the time we actually have the time to spend with them.
I have a curiosity. We have one of the world's best airports that sits here 20 minutes away and everybody knows that. And yet we also have every community that has at least one airport everywhere. We're curious about financing, economics, et cetera. In an era where people are not traveling and airlines are shutting off flights all over the place, I'd be real curious about our airport and what it's done in the past year and what it looks like in the future. I'd be real curious. I don't know the finances of the airport. I'd be real curious about money in, money out. It's a curiosity of mine.
It has been a very active one, one of the more active ones in the in the region or, you know, small jet traffic coming in and out like that. But we'd see what kind of information we need to get from the FBO or even the engineers that consulted with that. Another way again, building some additional high nurse, you know, we talked about that. And that one that one fell through. So we're back to trying to not to build what needs to be built rather than trying to check out what somebody wanted to do back. I think we made a lot of progress with that one. The other issue about the X and A, I think we're looking at Philip to see what's the timeline for the connection? How does that affect 412 and 112 interchange? And what do we see with that? And I think Mervin can tell us something about what kind of warehouse spaces that are. That may be close enough because it would be at the intersection of 112 and 412 where it's coming into that. And then you get over to 49 to go a little bit south. How does that affect all of that corridor?
That'd be interesting.
Yeah, I think that's kind of what we were talking, those two kind of working together to get that information. I know the highway department's trying to fast track the airport access route. And the highway department is acquiring a right of way for the portion of 412 from 49 back to the west to tie into Tonnentown. It's important we talk about 49 to 71, 265. I think that's just as important as Springdale as it is to the other part of it. Because you can't dump all that traffic out of 49 and still have it's got to get to the other side of Springdale. You know, so that's a very important driver and where are we going with that with the new cap, the new tax that passed? And why are we talking about that? What do we do with that?
Well, up from Tonnentown to 49. But once those trucks get 49, they're going straight to that 412. It's going to be worse.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we haven't totally addressed the problem that we'll stop at 49. And as we talked about the big warehouse project that we we looked at, that's at that intersection, how does that play in all that? Now, it hasn't moved forward. We haven't seen any plans or no announcements have been made about that project yet. I don't know if we're going to see it anytime soon.
Is that the 91 acre to 49?
The ones that we just, that the council overturned planning decision, yeah. Right now, I think we're supposed to just be draining upon itself, as I understand it. There's those things that need to be tied back. I just brought with me the regional planning commission's population projections for 2020 and their policy transportation plan goes all the way to 2045. Their estimated 2020 population is 85,197. And that includes population of Bethel Heights being incorporated into this. And when the census figures comes out, we may not have that because we tried to get that consolidated, but they may not have it for a couple of years. And then their projected population for the city of Springdale in 2045 is 154,352 people. That's adding 69,000 people in that comfort. That's a lot of people. Of course, the region as a whole, they're proposing it would go from 5,000, 518,328 in 2020 to 974,275 in 2045. Where are all those people going to go and what are they going to do and where are they going to live? Just if we look at just what Springdale's projections are, and their projections have been pretty good over the years. So that's that's something we need to think about. Now, they are with their transportation modeling program trying to distribute that population out in the region. So it'll be interesting to see how that comes out as they get finished. But that's, to me, that's kind of security. 2045 is not that all.
So Pat, so Patsy, there's a couple of, can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a couple of things that I'm interested in. I mean, I think we're collectively talking about what Patsy knows, my passion, that the Northwest Corridor still lacks a lot of planning. And we need to really focus a lot of that. I mean, you've got what we were talking about as far as the gateway into Springdale. And I think we need to really kind of think about conceptually and maybe it's partnership with the Chamber and some other locations of what do we want that area to look like as the gateway coming in from the airports? I mean, that that's going to be a big signature for for Springdale. And the master land use is critically important in that because, you know, once that airport extension is planned, that land becomes incredibly valuable going forward. And so it would be good to have some some good direction on that whole piece. The other area is the ballpark districts. You know, there's discussion, we've talked about extensions. I don't know legally if we can extend that ballpark district all the way down to the Johnson area or if that's just really more roads that we can plan out in that whole piece. But I think it would make sense if we legally can do some things as far as extending some of the master planning in that in that whole area. And then the other thing is, is that the city's starting to have a lot of infill areas. And I think we need to be really proactive as far as what we've done for the form-based code downtown and the the optional extension areas to really take some of the conceptual types of development and be in an in an education and informing mode of we're seeing a dramatic, we're starting to see a dramatic shift that it's not the traditional duplex, multiplexes, that there are other concepts that are being introduced. You know, I think of a property on Don Tyson that there was an attempt to put an apartment complex there and it just had a lot of opposition. And with some of these different types of concepts, it is a great place for that, but it lacks the support because of just the stereotypical behavior of people's thinking as far as multiplex areas. So a lot of the infill places, I think we need to to work on just how do we further educate?
And the key to that a lot of that is education. And we need some really good projects that are completed that people can look at and see it's not as scary as you used to be. It really isn't. And I think we're getting some of those. Go look at the Peaks project up on Cooper Drive. It looks good. It's a different kind of housing and it matches some of what we've done years ago, but it's a different quality. And that's the kind of stuff we have to start selling because we're going to see more of it as it comes through, which leads to some of the things that we're talking about, maybe a planted residential pub that's not 10 acres. You know, we talked about that and I think you'll see us coming forward with that. Some mixed use districts where we can do residential and commercial together like we do in downtown. And again, it doesn't have to be 10 acres. We've got to look on a smaller scale. So I think those are some of the things that at the state level we've talked about. And I think it's really important that that kind of stuff come forward. That's how we address some of this. And with the quality of what we've been able to do, I think we're going to be in a better position. The seed districts allows us to work with some of the local developers and we've got some ideas on how we move forward. I got to ask a question. Miranda's not on here, is she?
I don't think so.
So then I can talk about some things that we're not ready for the press. Fagels talked about pattern zoning, where you create some areas of a certain kind of structure is already available in that zone. I'm not going to propose that we do pattern zoning, but there may be some ways that we can do some pattern building development of a certain kind of building that we, this is what we want to look like, a duplex or a triplex or a live working or even a single family, that if you follow this exactly, you have a preset plans and you can infill with that and we know exactly what we're getting. And so we're kind of working through that process, working with some of the funders. The problem is it's expensive to have those pattern structure development packages made. We're talking $15,000, $20,000 to have a set of plans that you can hand over to somebody that can do that. Talking with some of our funders, the possibility if they want to help impact housing, that's where they put their money and help us get some of that done. So you're going to see us come forward with some ideas of that as we move further onto this. So we're trying to come up with some ways that we can direct. I mean, we have to work around the state law that says we can't do residential design standards. So we've got to have it where it's something that a property owner selects to do that, which that makes it work. That's why the seed districts work because the property owners are ready to do that. But there may be some gaps, you know? One developer may take a couple of lots, but there may be one small lot that that person who owns it can afford to go the same route as the others. And can we help address some of those issues? Testing it in the downtown area is probably a good place to test it, but it may be that we can use some of that in other areas of the city too. So those are kind of some of what I consider to be more progressive ways that we're looking at and how we how we address some of that. We're also working on a model of being able to develop projects that have a combination of market rate, workforce, housing development, low income housing, and even an element of transitional housing. We're working on a model, we're getting really close to bring that forward to look at too that may be adaptable to other areas because of some of the parameters we're putting together that. The opportunity zones that we have, and there's a slide in here that shows you what those are, has given us some opportunities to be able to address things a little differently because there's some additional financing arrangements that we didn't have before. It's a short window. We've got to get this stuff together very quickly because tax credits and the tax relief that you get for an opportunity zone needs to be done fairly quickly unless the administration extends the time. So those are some of the more different approaches we're looking at and how we address some of these issues.
I think I agree with with, you know, everything Patsy said because I'm just speaking to y'all as a, as, you know, as a small developer and a broker myself. There are four houses in Springdale right now under $150,000. So, you know, there's a good piece and I encourage everybody to read it if they can in the Business Journal, in the Northwest Arkansas Business Journal about our affordability crisis. And I, we are there, I think. We are, in my opinion, we are headed to $200 a square foot very quickly for just an average home. And it's really going to take some creative, we cannot keep doing what we have been doing. We will not, we just won't be able to, we won't be able to house everyone if we keep, if we keep kind of expanding at the seams and they're all one quarter lot houses and, you know, it's, I think it's going to really take some some creative thinking. And what I find interesting is that, you know, a couple of times in the last few months, we've actually seen these proposed by the developers. So I was thinking, maybe somebody else I'd like to hear from is, you know, ESI. We see ESI every month and they have, you know, feel like they do have their ear to the ground on what developers are looking to build and what they're looking to do. And I would really be interested to hear from them as well as some other kind of bigger brokers from some of the larger, from some of the, from some of the commercial real estate firms on the commercial side. But that's, I mean, all of those, the PUD idea, I'm a, I'm a big, I've been a big proponent of of doing another type of PUD that's not, that's not 10 acres because it gives us a lot more flexibility, you know, for some of that infill. But I think those are a couple of other groups I'd like to hear from.
Yeah, I agree. I guess one question I have is, are you wanting to hear the perspective of ESI or are you wanting to hear the perspective of Brian Moore?
Uh, no, I would like to hear what ESI, I would like to hear what they're hearing from their clients, right? Because their clients are essentially the ones who wind up before us and they're the ones that go to them to provide those engineering services. It doesn't have to be ESI, but it could be anyone.
I just say that because it has to be teed up the right way to put your ESI hat on, not your own investment. Because, I mean, we've seen Brian recently as far as, and he's got some great developments that are getting ready to get started. But those are two different perspectives in that whole piece. I'd be interested in hearing both. And to your point, Peyton, as far as hearing from a cross section of those things. But I think what you are bringing up is is interesting is is that in Northwest Arkansas... in Northwest Arkansas, it's no longer a viable option just because there's a lot of land that you just build a lot of one-story stuff. You're gonna have to start building up in certain things and, and that's where the education really needs to come in. But to me, I think it's a great option for some of these infill places as well. Where they're great locations, great properties, they just haven't been successful getting it over the finish line. But we do want to encourage, think outside the box, not the traditional apartment look. Use some of these things that even with what we're doing in the Form Based Code area, those work in other locations. And they can, they can bring the profitability that these developers are looking for. To your point that I, I think it could be this year that they get a two hundred dollars a square foot on it, quite honestly, especially the way gas prices are. So.
We've tossed around the idea of bringing some of the developers in to see if we could get them to kind of share. So far, we haven't really tied anybody down yet. Some of the commercial development that's going on on the west side of town, in and around the crossing and all that, to see what they're looking at in that area. I'm not sure we'll pull that off. But there's a couple of, you know, some residential developers that we know can bring them in. I think, in my opinion, it's more important for the developer rather than the engineering firm. Because the engineering firm is going to react to what the developer wants. We really need to talk.
Yeah, get Landmark to come in and talk about the successes that they are already having with cottages at the park. The prices those are going for is incredible.
Well, we'll keep looking forward and see if we can identify some of those that might come in, want to talk to us about that. You never know what you're going to get, but it doesn't hurt to ask. I met with a developer this afternoon that had done a lot of residential development. Maybe we can work something out with them. I don't know. Give us a limited time. We go through the ones that we listed first, kind of have those ideas and then we'll work on trying to put some of these others into the system somewhere through their movement.
Peyton, are you still there?
Yes, sir.
That comment about the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes in Springdale, you indicated there are just a few of them. Does that mean that, for example, that the tracks that Roush Coleman is developing, that those homes are going for more than a hundred and fifty thousand? Is that correct?
Sorry, I should probably clarify. What, I'm pulling that off the MLS, so it's usually, those are like homes that are used homes. So I don't, I don't know, I don't know Roush Coleman, I don't know what they're selling at personally. But this, what I'm talking about is just older homes that are just being, you know, somebody is moving and they list it, list it for sale. So not even a new home, just an existing one.
Good, thanks.
And there, maybe there's someone in the real estate business that we might want to come in and talk about that. You know, if you guys have some suggestions, let us know. If there's the Realtors Board, there may be somebody there that could come in and address that too. We really had a contact with them to see what kind of information that, that we, I'm, I'm, a couple of weeks ago, I had a Zoom meeting with the Northwest Arkansas Real Estate Investors Group, talking about what we're doing in Springdale. That was an interesting group. There's, there's some organizations out there that maybe we can just tap into and get some information. I don't know. We'll see what we might.
Yeah, you know, I always with these, you know, with, with you always, whoever we want to pick, right, we want somebody who obviously align, their, you know, values align with our goals and policies, right? So I think that was, that's why that's a good place to start, I feel like, and make sure that, you know, we review all of our goals and policies. And then, you know, we want, I feel like we want to hear from, nothing against the Realtor Board, but not necessarily the most progressive thinking group, right, about maybe how we could do this differently. So, hey, yeah, it's, it's all, it's all good to think about, but I would like to hear.
Shannon in her position as an appraiser, she may be someone that brings some resources to us because she does appraisals all over. We may want to kind of let her kind of take a session or provide some information on what she's seeing because they're currently doing that kind of stuff. For banks, not only just the city, but for banks and other institutions and financial organizations as well.
Patsy, just two other comments I have is, is that, and I, I think we've got a big list of things on here. The wagon wheel area really needs some serious evaluation on it because I don't, I don't have a problem and actually am encouraged the fact that you've got residential butting up against commercial. It's an area that needs, again, education of both of those will coexist. But what are the things that we should make sure that we watch out for? And really help, I don't want to say govern, but really help with the best decision making based off of master land use plans in some of those areas. I mean, there's been a bit of revision, the fact that Bethel Heights is now part of Springdale. There's been a lot of developments that we've recently approved. What do we see the rest of that looking like? Because I suspect within the next two years, most of that land along the wagon wheel corridor is going to, to be sold. And I think it's important to have a good point of view. Additionally, there's a major infrastructure problem that is just continuing to blossom with the the ra, I'm sorry, the, well, the ramps and the bridge as far as wagon wheel. It can't take much more infrastructure on there just because the volume can't handle that throat flow-through. Especially when you add whatever goes into that distribution warehouse space on there. The amount of truck traffic is going to come through in those locations. What kind of, based on our master land use plans, how can we effectively influence at the state level plans for those roads right there that it's some joint funding that we do the appropriate expansions in there that directly impacts a master land use piece on it?
Well, that's a discussion to have with Philip.
What's that?
That's a discussion to have with Philip, when Philip Toldo is here because that was one of the things we need to talk about is how does this this whole 412 bypass and its timing affect all of these other areas? And, you know, I think that's important while we get you married pretty soon because it's a major driver of what happens in Springdale.
Yeah, this morning was a great example. There was an accident on that bridge and it backed it up for almost two miles. So just a, a real critical area of, of influence on it. And then I'd love to even hear from our city north of us in Lowell. And what do they have planned? And how should we collectively be thinking about some of those areas, the Apple Blossom Extension? And how do we complement each other? We always think about Springdale, but how do we complement some of these adjacent cities?
Yeah, I know we've had the discussion with, with both Lowell and Fayetteville and Johnson on the 112 thing and even in Rogers and Bentonville. So that's a good idea. We'll, we'll make a note about that and see what we can, what we can discuss with them on, because that's a good question.
The other, the last time. The, the last comment I have was, is that we should educate as far as the impact, as far as the work from home. But I'm already seeing where people are ready to get out of their house and go back to the office. And it is exploding as far as people going back to the office now. So I'm not sure how impactful that work from home and sustainable that that's going to be. But it's definitely something to continue to consider.
I think that's a good question from Irving, but I don't think he has any better answers than the rest of us. I know in my discussions with some of the bigger companies, I think flexibility is what we're going to get out of this and work schedules. But I'm, I'm like you, I don't think, this working from home was not as great as it was, everybody thought it was going to be. It's, it's, it's a change. I don't think we're, I think we'll see some change. And I just had a discussion with a group today about the Walmart Home Office. They're not changing the footprint of the building any, but the configuration on the inside may be what we see as a result of all this. So it's, it's, it's interesting to see what's going to happen with that. I don't know if anybody's got any real insight how this is going to work yet. But it does bring on some interesting questions, that's for sure.
I can tell you, my wife's happy that I'm going back to the office.
If we do do this in conjunction with the master street plan, because I do think, if we can pull that off, I do think that would be, I do think that'd be a good idea. There, there are, I've been, there are several streets I'm thinking about that I think really need to, that because of the, because of the work we've done with either an overlay district or expansion of downtown or just what we're going to be doing with the land use plan, feel like trails and, and road plan would tie into that too. Can we, can we really make that our goal?
I think we need to. I, I think we need to, now, we may not actually make updates on the plan itself, but the two have, the three have to tie together. We were talking about today. One of the goals for residential development may be that pedestrian, we strengthen that pedestrian access that's provided in all those subdivisions and everything that's going on and interconnectivity between different areas that are not all vehicular. And so that may be how we address that and it ties into the other two without doing major changes to that. I mean, when you look at the master street plan, we've got it laid out pretty well on water major minor collectors and all that kind of stuff. I don't see major changes in that. The question is, how do we get safer streets? Do we make sure that there's trails and we make sure that there's sidewalks and all that? So I, to answer your question shortly, sorry, I got off on track. Yes, I think it needs to all come together, yes. If we're talking about the immediate facilities plan on which streets are going to be built next, that's going to be a little bit different story because that goes into a different group to make those decisions.
What's the mechanism to overhaul the sidewalk requirements?
Well, the sidewalk requirements are set in the subdivision regulations. That's probably where we would make the changes. I mean, are you, as a general rule or just as pro connections? I'm not sure I know what you mean.
I don't think sidewalks are needed everywhere based off of how we're doing trail systems and things like that. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of contributing to sidewalks, but having to have to have a sidewalk on every property is insane.
Well, I mean, something to consider is how we treat those within subdivisions. Is our sidewalk something that we require as a component of the final CO once the lot has been built out? Or do we start requiring the sidewalk be completed in its entirety throughout the subdivision, regardless of whether or not the lot has been developed? Because if we let it depend on whether or not lots developed and, you know, inherently we're going to have gaps within that. So that might be something to consider, you know. But I do think it's important that we keep in mind, you know, our trail facilities and all of our infrastructure is only as, you know, effective as it can be. We are indeed able to get the first, first block, the first three blocks, the first half mile to get to the said facility. So I think it's critical that we, we consider those elements within subdivisions themselves. And I know that when you say that, Kevin, you may be speaking in context of, you know, rural properties and things of that nature. But that was just something I wanted to, to mention to put that thought out there.
It's not just about the rural areas. It's even with the commercial properties and things like that. There are certain areas of the city that, I mean, I, I agree, you've got to create the ability to connect. But I think there are areas that that is maturing and doesn't necessarily have to have, everything has to have a sidewalk in it. I don't know. I mean, I'm trying to eliminate, it's a separate topic altogether, but really just need to take a deep dive into all of those waivers that have come in front of us. Which ones have we been consistent as far as denying or, or approving? And, you know, I'd prefer that we, we don't approve and allow that nothing is contributed to the city. I think there's opportunities to help invest in the trail systems by having that as a, a fee structure with any new development that doesn't necessarily hold them to the rigorous requirements of the sidewalk pieces for that particular property, but where they can contribute to other areas of the city. So something to think about. I mean, I don't, I don't know if that goes into the master streets and, you know, and some of the ordinance pieces, but I think it's something that we need to just really kind of consider.
That also gets into state law, whether you can pay something in generally and it not be done in that area. And we'll have to bring Ernest in on that because that has been a discussion from a long time ago. Is it an impact fee of what you're providing here and you don't, or is it a direct responsibility of that development? And that's a bigger conversation than we've done, you know, so that's.
We, I would think that, I, I understand as far as complying with the law, but we also are a significant voice. And if it's, if it's not relevant, then there's modifications to the law that need to be addressed.
And maybe we need to get Ernest in to talk about that sometime. I mean, the number of topics we got to talk about, y'all are going to have to be here every week to get through all that stuff. That's kind of how some of that works. So, you know, we, we don't want to get off in the weeds too much until we actually get some of the original goals, policy statements tied down and be able to move forward with that. But we have a lot of issues to discuss. There's no question we do. And as we move forward, we're just going to have to figure out what's the priority and what we move to next.
Yeah, I'm not advocating we need to have that as part of the, the master land use or even the street plan piece. But I mean, I just, we were kind of referencing it and I just wanted to bring that out there that it's every month.
Okay, guys, do we have anything? Sorry.
I was just saying, I'm bringing it up as a, a call out because we never seem to have time to, because our, our, our regular planning commission meetings are becoming more and more lengthy. And I'm just calling out things that we need to also in parallel address to add efficiencies to that. And not only just efficiencies to the meeting, but, I mean, if we're going certain directions typically most of the time, there's got to be better ways to address it. So that's the only reason why I'm bringing it up.
My philosophy, we have to do a lot of whatever's a variance, if something needs to change.
The way that this map here that I'm looking at is, is that broken up by any, in any particular way?
The opportunity zones are raised on census tracts.
But these are opportunity, oh, got, well, there it is at the bottom.
It's only those census tracts and that is a decision that was made by the governor to establish those, yeah.
Yeah, gotcha. Sorry, I, I didn't see that. I thought maybe that we were breaking up the city into sections to kind of review in, I thought somebody said earlier about kind of taking it in smaller pieces and looking at sections like that. Is that something we're talking about doing?
We have done that in the past. We got to get past the general goals and policy statements before we start applying those to different sections. And it, it makes sense to me that we do quadrants at a time. It's too much to do it all at one time. So we're going to have to break it down into quadrants and move forward with those. Some of them may not need as much as others.
Right. I, I do think that that's, that, that brings me to one thing that I think we should focus on again this time around too is, is if you take any particular section of the city, we really don't want to see only residential in that area, right, or, or even only commercial in that area. Or even only commercial in that area. Because it goes back to our traffic problem. You know, if you can't get to commercial services without having to get in your car and drive 20 minutes, that's a problem. So being able, each of these, each kind of area of the city, having some space dedicated to commercial activity, I think is probably a good idea. And this would help me visualize that, you know, broken up like that. You could kind of see...
And that's a statement I will agree with, except when you talk about industrial.
Sure, sure.
There are areas that need to be maintained because of the facilities and the railroad and the major roads that that needs to be industrial concentration. So we, for the most part, that all works except for industrial.
Right, right.
But to build on your point, you know, I think by eliminating the barriers we have for the mixed-use components and some of the infill residential, that would be a good way to address that and create more variety in those areas and, you know, more neighborhood services and things like that that serve at a neighborhood scale as opposed to, you know, a regional commercial scale, if that's what you were getting at.
I was getting to that. And, you know, it's because all that stuff ties in together, right? So, you know, parking requirements and all that kind of stuff, you know, depending on the scope of the project, maybe there's ways that we can account for smaller, lighter versions of that kind of stuff.
Well, and the shift in e-commerce is something that affects everything that's going on. We may not see any big box retail stuff coming on anymore because they don't compete well. I think that's something that Mervin can probably address, too. The trains that they see in that kind of development, the more, or better term, mom and pop type organizations are the things that we're seeing or something on a smaller scale. I think that's something we have to talk about. The idea of everything going out to the interstate because it's gotta be out there in big boxes, I don't think we're gonna see that anymore.
They're just, they're not big boxes anymore, right? They're like ginormous boxes if they're out by the interstate anymore.
And their distribution centers, the fulfillment centers, not just totally retail like they used to be.
Right, right.
It's a different world we're in right now, as far as I'm concerned. Okay, we're approaching our hour. We don't have anything else unless there's something you guys want to put into it. We're scheduled to meet on the 30th. Work session then on the 30th, funding commission meeting on the 6th, and because there's an extra Tuesday in April, it gives us a chance to have two meetings in April. We're trying to get as much of this base work as we can get done before the summer when people are gone. Because if the world opens up to travel, I would imagine most everybody's gonna travel as much as they can. So we gotta kind of work within the timeframe that we've got. So that's what we're proposing as how we move forward with this in the next couple of months. And tomorrow's the deadline for rezoning applications. We don't know how many we've got coming in. We've got a couple of big subdivisions, one of them probably, well, we have three. One of them's gonna be titled because it needs some work. So we're kind of, the agenda may not be quite as heavy as it has been at my place.
I hope so.
Yeah, me too.
Let's wait till tomorrow.
Yeah, we're having a meeting to discuss the issues that need to be addressed before we let this one go further. So, and sometimes that takes a little bit of talking to get that all worked out, so.
All right.
Anybody got anything else? We don't want to hold you too long, but we want to make sure everybody gets a chance to comment whatever they need to comment on.
Is there a shirt color for the meeting on March 30th? Orange.
Orange. Kevin, do you have a blue shirt today?
Hey, it's orange on 30th.
I actually have like an aqua color shirt on today, yeah.
Roy, is yours the same color to you?
Were we supposed to be wearing shirts?
Oh, no.
Good answer, good answer.
Oh, no.
Dr. Condon was worried all of us had blue shirts on. He didn't get emails and we...
Thank you, Mr. DeLuise representative.
So my ending takeaway is Roy there with no shirt. Okay, all right.
My job here is done.
Thank you, Roy.
Thanks, guys.
All right. See you, guys.
Bye.
Bye-bye.